Call the meeting to order, please. If you will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance by Lowell Cub Scout PAC 9 Leader Randy Lusk, remain standing for the invocation to be given by Randy Brown Pastor Lowell Assembly of God.
Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus Christ tonight. We thank you for all the things that you're doing in our lives and especially for the privilege it is to walk with you. Or we pray for our leaders tonight. You have instructed us to do this in your word. So we pray for your divine wisdom in their lives tonight beyond their years of experience and knowledge. We pray for supernatural insight and vision into the future of this city. We know, Lord, that you're concerned with this city. We ask you for your hand to be upon us tonight as we make choices and decisions that'll affect the future of this fine city in Jesus' name. Amen.
Kamala Lamons.
Here.
Jerry Foley.
Here.
Eric Schein.
Here.
Darren Brock.
Here.
Keith Williams.
Here.
Carol Harmon.
Here.
Marty Latham.
Here.
Paula Allred.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. It contains the Lowell City Council minutes, regular meeting November 4th, and a financial statement for October 31, 2008.
I have a change to the minutes.
Yes, Marty?
The city clerk and I have discussed this and on Section C, there's a sentence needs to be removed about midway through. So I would approve the minutes with the exception of striking that sentence.
Which sentence was that, Marty? I couldn't hear you. Your microphone's not on.
It's not. Can you hear me now? The one that's in the middle of this paragraph in Section C, it says also we should not have both restrictions. That needs to be removed from there.
The city clerk will make those changes and I entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second. Roll. Oops. Second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Kamala Lamons.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is Old Business Emergency Services Contract. Uh-oh. Forgot one, sorry. Public Forum comes next. Sorry, Mike. Guy Schumaker. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I ran into some people while I was running for election for city council here and I was told after election that one of the reasons that Carol Harmon and I lost was the fact that I questioned what goes on in the city council meeting. And Janet Lassner and Carol Harmon are classified as troublemakers due to the fact that supposedly they associate with me. I want this council to know right point blank, I have more education, more knowledge on council functions and city business than you do. I have the time to study. I have the time to learn. I don't work. My wife doesn't work. I've been to school, to University of Arkansas, attending classes at my expense. I don't think any of you have ever attended a planning commission meeting or attended a meeting at Little Rock, the duties and responsibility of the city council. If you have, I'm sorry that I'm thinking wrong. But I want you to know, Schumaker has a brain and he has a big mouth and he ain't afraid to use either one. One other thing I want to know is when, Mr. Mayor, are you going to accept our city clerk as a city clerk that we voted for? I know you have problems with her. I know that. I hear that up and down in the streets. I attended a veterans dinner over at the Golden Corral last night and I heard about it. Guy, what's wrong with the city Lowell and their city clerk? Why won't the mayor accept her? Now, this is people from the city of Lowell, veterans. And I said, I don't know. That's between Perry Long and his god. Thank you.
Mitch Isles.
I do notes so that I don't get carried away or anything. I'd like to thank you for allowing me this time to speak and I'd like to thank each of you for your service to the city, for your leadership, and I hope it continues. As a quick reminder, the preamble of the United States Constitution says that the government is to provide safety and protection for its citizens. Having said that, most people live in smaller communities because they don't like the involvement of big government. A few years ago, on Daisy Circle, we got one man complained to the city. It got our streets changed from free parking to no parking all of a sudden and what happened to fire lane? All of a sudden it became a fire issue when it was really because somebody else was parking in front of somebody's driveway. So now we have no parking on any streets and it's not fire lanes, it's fire streets. At this point in time, it's real hard for me to have a church fellowship or even my family come visit me and park and find parking. Now, because of one person that has gotten upset because he couldn't sell his house or whatever reason, we're looking at an ordinance to keep people from parking on the grass. You know, if I've got three teenagers at home and each of them have a car, I can't build a five-car garage. I can't, you know, there's got to be places. Is it just cars? Is it going to be RVs? Is it going to be boats? Am I going to be offended because somebody's got a basketball goal out there and I can't sell my house or because my children or somebody's children down the street left their bicycles out when I was showing a house? We need to use some common sense here. You know, the streets are public, our land is private. I'm all for keeping our houses and yards looking nice. I've been parking beside my driveway for the past five years and you can't see ruts in it. I'm just lucky, I guess. But we need to remember that this is a great city and we want to keep it that way, but we're not a gated community. We're a city and one person or two or three shouldn't control the laws of the entire city. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Raymond Burns.
Thank you, your honor, members of the city council. I have before you the completed document of Vision 2025. We released it today in our leaders conference. I commend it to you for your reading enjoyment. I wouldn't do it late at night, it might put you to sleep. There are some very interesting findings in here. There are 38 total sectors. We had about 1,000 people over the last year that have had something to do with this document in one way or another. There are eight specific sectors to Lowell and 11 sectors that cover the region which also would touch Lowell. And while we think it's a good document, remember it is a vision document. It's something that looks way forward. You all are the ones that set the policy for the city, but hopefully you'll take the time to look through this and in three or four years, those needs will change and we'll be back and do it again. But I hope you all will read the document and we appreciate very much the opportunity that we had to include Lowell in this for the second time and we hope it's useful to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Ed Miller? Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's about a year ago, I talked to you a little bit in city hall about this parking situation in yards. Kind of seconded what the other gentleman said here. Not every house in this town has a paved driveway. There's ruts with grass growing between them. There's people that work out of their trucks parked at their homes. This is an invasion of people's property rights. Somebody don't like the look of my ruts, that's their problem. They shouldn't come talk to me about it. I mean, I bought this house, it was 25 years old when I bought it, 20-some years ago. One of the first houses, pastures all around me when I bought that house. Now, other people move in there, build a house, put a driveway in there and want me to change the situation. I don't think that's right. There's three cars in my house. My wife goes somewhere to work, I go somewhere else. My grandson's living with me now, he drives somewhere else. Got one-car garage, my wife, she leaves at 4:30 in the morning. I don't want to have to get up and move my vehicle out of that little old driveway. Why can't I just park on the side of those? There's grass on both sides. Because it was gravel, but it's just ruts and it was gravel. You need to take some of this into consideration too. Somebody's eyesore or somebody else's home. I'm done with my, here, just take that into consideration. I've called you today. I hope it left a message with you because you're in my district. To you also. Thank you, God. My neighbor does rock work, got a big old truck sitting out there. He does a lot of work. You know, he don't have a paved driveway either. Need to take that into consideration. Thank you for your listening.
Anyone else have any comments? Next item on the agenda is Old Business Emergency Services Contract with Bethel Heights. Chief Mike Morris.
I assume, I hate that word, but I assume that you all have a copy of the proposed contract with Bethel Heights. As I'm pretty sure you all know, we currently and have for some time now provided fire protection for their city and that's, we're not changing that. It was just that the contract needed to be updated, made more current, and a little more equitable distribution of the cost of doing business to provide that service for them. So through negotiations with both Bethel Heights and ourselves, this is the document that we finally came to an agreement on. And Bethel Heights, FYI, Bethel Heights Council has already looked at it. Fred Jack has already looked at it and signed their part of it. So it's for your consideration if you have any questions.
Mike, on point number three, where Bethel Heights will be responsible for 50% of the annual cost for training of volunteer personnel, I'm assuming that's Lowell volunteer, are there any Lowell volunteer firemen?
The volunteers are actually both Bethel Heights and Lowell combined.
Okay, and I'm assuming that cost will be split equally among both cities?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Got one other small one.
That's fine.
On point number nine.
Yes, ma'am.
With the 5% of the fire chief's annual salary will be paid and that's to be reestablished on an annual basis since this is a two-year contract, does it make sense to? That was the only thing that I saw was a discrepancy. It's a two-year contract.
Originally, that was set up as the contract renewed and then through the discussions, it was decided they wanted, because the salary, hopefully, Michael Wood, would change annually, that we felt the compensation needed to do something.
Okay, that makes sense. I'm just curious.
Yeah, that was where it came from. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. If no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Take it.
Roll call, please.
Kamala Lamons.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
This will be resolution number 08-12.
Next item on the agenda is the Destruction of Records. Mary Mason.
Every year, we try to keep our records cleaned up so we don't have so many in the storeroom. And this year, 2004, was audited in 2005, so three years later, we can now destroy them if you approve the affidavit. Are there any questions about that?
Any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the destruction of records as requested.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Kamala Lamons.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is a tax-back resolution. I would like to make a comment before Mr. Burns comes forward. We in Lowell have made a commitment to being business-friendly. This resolution gives us an opportunity to support a new business coming to Lowell, IO Metro. Not many businesses qualify for state incentive packages, so it is important when we have an opportunity to help a local company get assistance from the state, we do so. IO Metro is moving here from one of our neighboring cities. Raymond.
Thank you, your honor. It is exciting when a new business chooses to move to our community and I think before we go much further, we should introduce Jeremy Teepel, who's the chief financial officer for IO Metro, to tell you just a little bit about the company. Jeremy?
A little bit about IO Metro. We're a retail furniture chain. We have 11 stores currently. We've opened four this year. We're growing quickly. It's a tough retail environment out there, but we do a lot of direct importing. So over half of our merchandise is brought over from several different countries, India, Indonesia, China are our biggest ones, into a central distribution facility and then from there, every one of our stores gets one truck per week. Currently, we have operations, our warehouse is in Bentonville. We have 30,000 square feet there in Bentonville. And then we had our corporate headquarters where our corporate office employees resided, it was in Rogers. And so with this project, we're looking to combine those operations, bringing all the corporate office employees into one facility along with its central distribution facility here in Lowell. They're on the end of Commercial Avenue. So basically, we're increasing our warehouse from 30,000 square feet up to 53,000 square feet. It's an existing building. As part of that, we're looking to build the corporate offices within that box. It's about a $200,000 project and like I say, that's, like I say, we're growing quickly and one of the main reasons why we did move down here to Lowell and chose that specific facility was there's land actually adjacent to the building that we will have first right of refusal on to take the space. So as fast as we're growing, the 53,000 square feet we're looking at moving into will probably last us 18 to 24 months and at that point, we'll be having to look to expand somewhere else. So coming down here to Lowell where there is that ability to do a simple build-out on the back of our existing facility is one of the driving forces behind our decision to come to Lowell. You guys have any questions for me?
Thank you.
The Arkansas Department of Economic Development, the AEDC, provides incentive packages to certain businesses under certain circumstances and because they are a distribution center, they do qualify for an incentive called the Tax Back Program. It's an incentive that's been around for many, many years. When I first started, it was the Arkansas Enterprise Zone program. Clint O'Neill is here from the state of Arkansas, realizing this is new to the council and something that's new to Lowell. We thought it'd be good if we get the pros to come up here and explain to you what this incentive does so you could better understand it. We know there'll be questions and Clint, if you wouldn't mind.
Sir.
Why don't you explain the incentive thing and I'm sure there'll be some questions for you.
All right. To say a little bit to what Jeremy and Mr. Burns has already said, there are a few different industries, sectors of business that we reward with incentives. One is a distribution center, particularly this one, because they will, within three years, derive at least 75% of their income from out of state. And the way we look at that is we say, if they're getting 75% or greater of their income from out of state, they just as well could be out of state. They could be anywhere. They're a distribution center, kind of like a manufacturing facility or somewhere else. Different than a sector that would not get rewarded, something like a restaurant or retail or a car wash or something like that. They come to town because businesses like Jeremy's have already come to town. The Tax Back Program is eligible to Jeremy's business, IO Metro Distribution Center, only if they qualify for an incentive called Advantage Arkansas. This is a state incentive for creating jobs. That is the purpose of our agency. We're here to create jobs and to increase investment in the state. The Advantage Arkansas program says that they have to create new full-time jobs that create a new full-time payroll of at least $125,000. They are projected to do so, so they qualify for an incentive called Tax Back. Now, Advantage Arkansas helps to offset income tax credits. That's nothing that you guys would do locally, that's a state issue. The incentive Tax Back that they have qualified for, the state portion basically says of the expansion project of the 200,000, if they're all eligible expenditures, basically meaning if it's construction materials, things that would have a sales tax liability, if it's purchased in the state of Arkansas, they will be eligible under the Tax Back Program to receive the state portion of the sales tax back only if the local governing body partners with us. For those of you that may know something about the law, it was changed in 2005 to state that Tax Back will only be kicked in at the state level if it is activated with the local governing body. So, Mayor, appreciate your support on this. Any questions?
So they get not only the 2% for Lowell, they get the 6% for the state?
They get 5% back from the state. We hold one for education. And that's just for the expansion project. Once they're up and running, you know, they'll have a sales tax liability that will be paid into the state, to the city. Obviously, the purpose is, you know, you bring distribution centers to town, that creates jobs, which has a multiplier effect. But yes, you're correct. On the projected 200,000, if all of that is eligible expenditures, they'll be refunded 2% from the city of Lowell, 5% from the state of Arkansas.
Does the money get refunded before it's transmitted to Lowell? Lowell won't have to refund that. That'll be handled by?
It'll be handled by the Department of Finance and Administration. Monthly, the company pays in monthly. This will kick in on an annual basis. Basically, you know, let's say for the year 2008, you know, IO Metro pays a little bit in, they do part of their expansion project here in this year. If they turn that in in time, what the Department of, the city of Lowell will never cut a check to IO Metro. It'll be the Department of Finance Administration will take everything that they give back to the city of Lowell and let's say for a particular month, let's say January, I'm just making up figures, they give the city of Lowell 100,000. Well, if IO Metro has qualified for 2,000 that month, they would just give the city of Lowell 98,000. Does that make sense?
Any other questions?
For up to three years for the expansion project. I mean, it's our understanding for this expansion project, which is, you know, a $200,000 renovation, it'll be taken care of much faster than three years. And at that point, like I said, when they're up and running, you know, the program is ended at that point.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Kamala Lamons.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
This will be resolution number 08-13.
Next item on the agenda is the ambulance. As you all are aware, our neighboring cities are going to start charging for ambulance service. Our cost will be approximately $111,000 a year. So you would have a better information as to the possibilities for Lowell. Fire Chief Mike Morris has prepared an alternative for the city of Lowell for your information. We are not here tonight to vote on this. It's merely an information system so when we discuss the budget on January the 1st, you will be more informed of your options. Mike?
As he said, when we first got the information from originally the city of Springdale, as you all are well aware and everybody in four counties, I think, is, they decided that they felt like we needed to pay for that service that we had always received for nothing or for free. The mayor asked me at that point, he said, what are our other options? What can we look at? Can you put together, research it out, put together what you think is our best options other than this? So with the aid of the gentleman you all see sitting back there.
We feel that our, I feel and we feel, that our best option there would be to purchase a demo model, which would still be a new ambulance, wouldn't have already had several hundred thousand hours of service in it. And in researching that out, we feel we can do that for about eighty thousand dollars. Personnel, we would have to add four people to the current fire department staff. Reason for that is the state mandates that you be able to respond to an ambulance emergency call within two minutes. And we also have to be able to, in order to maintain our ISO rating that we currently have, and state mandated, we also have to be able to respond to another emergency, a fire emergency type, or a wreck, or whatever the case may be, within two minutes. So we would need to have a minimum of four personnel on staff at all times, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Currently, we have two per shift. I have two guys that I can move to shift, who currently work eight-hour days, and they're willing to do that. Therefore, we'd have to add four additional personnel to cover that requirement, to meet those state regulations and our insurance regulations. Again, based on average salaries, including benefits, that's approximately a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Equipment to staff the ambulance, or to, I'm sorry, to equip the ambulance, for example, a cot is about five thousand dollars. Imagine that. But with the ambulance service that we would want to put in and need to put in, the remaining equipment is two hundred dollars here, four hundred, and basically, that's about twelve thousand dollars to equip an ambulance to be ready to roll out the door. Supplies, that is a one-time, big bite of about five thousand dollars. Once you get it stocked and you get it supplied, then it's an annual cost, which would, my estimation would be, would drop a little bit here. But the initial cost of getting everything into the ambulance that you need, other than the basic equipment, when I talk supplies, I'm talking, just for example, airways, splints, things along those lines, bandages, what have you, to get it stocked up would be about five thousand dollars. And then on top of that, we anticipate, based on the current maintenance cost to our other equipment that we have, it would run about two thousand dollars a year. Estimated fuel usage, based on about five to six hundred calls a year, would be about fifty-four hundred dollars. That's based on a twenty-five mile round trip, because you'd be transporting ambulance. Granted, it's not twenty-five miles from most of Lowell to Mercy Medical Center or Springdale, but that doesn't mean you're not going to be taking some of these patients to the VA in Fayetteville, or Washington Regional, or coming from Point Eleven out on the lake. So I took an average of twenty-five miles round trip. That's where you get that figure from. Licensing, I've checked with the state licensing board, and it costs seven hundred, or actually, it's a little under seven hundred, I rounded it up. It's actually about six hundred and fifty to sixty dollars annually to re-license your ambulance for service. That is a recurring fee. When you're at nuts and bolts, when you add all that up, it would cost us about two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars to be able to put everything together, get everybody on board, and be ready to roll out the door to the next medical emergency we had in our Again, that's an estimate. These are based on what we were able to go out and look at and find comparable costs. We comp shopped several different vendors for these types of equipment, so we had a fair average cost for you all. On the flip side of that, being an ambulance service, by law, you can bill for that service to the people you pick up and transport. There's several different ways to look at that. You don't typically collect a hundred percent, to be honest about it. I checked with the three major ambulances in the area, and they average, between the three of them, they average about eighty percent of their fees they actually are able to collect back. So what I did was, I took and I calculated, we would have to establish a base charge that this city was going to charge for ambulance service and transport, per transport. You shop around the other cities, it varies anywhere from four hundred to six hundred and fifty dollars, depending upon what city you talk to. They also have a variable rate, where if they go outside the city limits and serve the county area bordering them, some of these cities have a additional charge on top of that for being outside the city, and some of them don't. That's something, as a council, you would have to determine what that policy was going to be, and if you chose to, what that rate would be. I based the, what I did was, I took and said, okay, Medicaid, Medicare has a cap. They will only pay so much for an ambulance service and transport. So what I did was, I took all of our runs, multiplied it out by that cap, figuring worst-case scenario, heaven forbid, but worst-case scenario, everything was Medicaid or Medicare. Okay? Took that, multiplied it out. If we collected that back, that's where you see the line that talks about the service fee collection. We could collect approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred a year, which would come off of that previous bottom line, resulting in a cost to the city estimated of about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year to operate the service. Now, that's salaries, equipment, everything we have. Some of the factors that we had to look at, ALS, I guess I'm going to have to talk about that one real quick. I didn't want to, but I will. I don't know how many of you familiar with the difference between ALS and BLS and what it even means. ALS stands for Advanced Life Support. BLS is Basic Life Support. How to define the difference to a layman, I'll do the best I can. Basically, if a person has to have immediate invasive care, you have to have an IV started, you have to have drugs or medication pushed immediately, those are advanced life support level abilities, or whatever, I can't think of the word I want to use at the moment. BLS is exactly what it says, Basic Life Support. You deal mostly with fractures, falls, concussions, diabetic emergencies, the things that, yeah, that person needs to go to the hospital, and yeah, they need to be checked out, and yeah, they need to be taken care of, but they're not going to die on you between here and Mercy Hospital. Okay? That's where the difference lay. This service we would propose would be a BLS service. The reason I'm talking about that is because one of the factors you have to consider is we do have ALS calls in this area, and that's not going to change. But in researching it out the last few days, and taking our runs to date this year, just to give you an idea, when you do the math, less than seven point five percent of all of our calls qualifies as ALS, or an ALS call. Approximately ninety-three percent are of the BLS type. So we feel that what we can do is, we can provide the BLS service, which we currently do with our rescue, but we don't do transport. We wait for the ambulance to get there. And then on the ALS side, which is where I'm going, we would, Springdale or Rogers, whichever was the closest ALS service, they would be requested to respond immediately with us on that call. And we would either do an intercept if it was a long transport, for example, if we had to come from out toward the lake, or Irvin-McGar Road, somewhere in that area, and we had an ALS situation, we would load that patient in our ambulance immediately. We would assess the patient, get him stable as we could, get him in the ambulance, meet the ALS ambulance en route, and do a patient transfer at that point, so that the ALS procedures can be begun immediately at that point. And have spoken to both Rogers and Springdale, and this is something that they do regularly with other services, and we would be able to set up here as well. Mutual aid for secondary responses if Lowell's committed the first call. Again, we have neighboring ambulances, Rogers and Springdale in particular, they have done the same thing on this area. If we are out on a call, and we get a second call while we're in the process of doing the original transport on a different call, we would sign a mutual aid agreement with them, where they would handle that second call in our area. We would reciprocate that, in that, for example, if Springdale's four ambulances were all committed to whatever they were doing, and they had an ambulance call to the north side of Springdale, we would reciprocate and cover that area for them as well. That's very common in the fire side of the service, and is becoming more common on the EMS side. That was how we would deal with those things. Staffing of Station Forty-One, I've already spoken about why we would need the four additional personnel, I spelled it out there already for you. One of the questions is, what about the county? Because we cover, I don't know how many of you know, we literally cover more than just the Lowell city limits, Inverton Heights city limits. We cover all the way to the lake. We cover out Point Eleven, we cover down to basically Two Sixty-Four and Irvin-McGar, actually a little bit east of there. And so we have a large county area we would have to cover as well. Also, Hickory Creek has expressed some interest in possibly wanting to have us cover, under contract, cover with them, because the county is in the same boat we are. They currently have gotten a bill from Springdale, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, but I believe that's around fifty-six thousand dollars that Springdale is asking for, the county for, just for those same areas that I just talked about. And I know that their comptroller has made the statement, he would prefer to keep the money in Benton County if at all possible. So we would have some opportunity for some other collection there as well. I didn't put that in here, because in case it didn't happen. Excuse me. They run approximately a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five additional calls on top of what we run at this time. They're currently covered by Springdale. Billing for calls, I kind of explained where we came up with our rates. I used the rate of three hundred and fifty with a question mark, and I based that on the fact that the billing rates that I explained to you earlier by the larger cities are for ALS service, since they would still be providing an ALS transport for us, we would be doing mostly BLS calls. Again, ninety-three percent of everything we do is BLS. That was a figure that we felt was fair to look at, as just a recommendation. You could change it to whatever you felt was appropriate at that time. And again, I explained at the bottom, the collection estimate and how we calculated that. So that, I can tell you that in conversations with my personnel, and we feel like this is the best alternate option for us, that is both providing a level of service, a good level of service to the city, and at the same time, is fiscally responsible for what we're able to do at this time. Just for your information, and again, one thing I would say, as I said earlier about the, is, if you have any questions on it, where do we come up with this, what can we do, what do we do about it, what's wrong with it, whatever, feel free to call me, come and see me, whatever, and I'll be happy to walk you through it and answer any questions that I can.
You were saying these numbers were based on five hundred to six hundred calls?
Yes.
Springdale's letter says two hundred and twenty-nine from their point. Did Rogers do three hundred calls?
No, Springdale, when they sent their call to us, is only inside the city limits, between I-540 and Old Wire Road. That doesn't include the calls we take in the county. Our, and also doesn't include everything west of I-540. Rogers runs approximately twenty-five percent of that volume, twenty-five to thirty percent of that volume on the west side, the remainder is in our county area. We're at, I'm going to say this, and I'm going to be wrong by a couple, we are at approximately four hundred and seventy, four hundred and seventy medical or EMS calls, rescue calls to date this year in our response area.
Did you run any numbers of what it would cost to do the, have the paramedics?
To do the ALS level service? I started to do that, and when I got to a half a million dollars, I quit. Because there's, and that's just as long as I can be about it. When I got to a level that I knew was not at this time fiscally something we could probably do, that was where I quit. There's a lot more equipment you have to have, there's a higher level of salary that you have to pay, because there's definitely a higher level of qualification and training there.
What did you base these salaries on?
I based them on our current EMT level pay. It's approximately twenty-nine to thirty thousand dollars a year plus benefits.
I talked to Dr. at the university, I mean, at the North West.
I knew you did, they called me this afternoon and told me.
Who, the college?
People that work there told me that you'd come.
Yeah.
And I was tickled to death to hear that. I hope everybody will do that if this thing.
He talks like, paramedics are not quite that expensive. That was one of the concerns. He felt like you could probably start somebody out at twenty-five thousand.
Not in the fire service, because what we have to do is, they have to be a combination firefighter, paramedic, and that is a very competitive business. It's hard to keep those people. Rogers and, newspaper's going to quote me on this, and then I'm going to be wrong. My understanding is, they pay, and Springdale as well, pay somewhere between an additional three to five thousand dollars a year, above and beyond the standard basic starting salary if you come in qualified as paramedic. And in our case, again, it's not just a medic we would be hiring, it is a medic slash firefighter, or an EMT slash firefighter. You can, if they can hire a paramedic, I'm not being sarcastic.
Why would we have to do that?
Because we have to be able to man both apparatus, and we don't necessarily, for overtime shift coverage, for flexibility in your staff, and quite honestly, I'm not being sarcastic again, but if somebody can hire a paramedic in this area for twenty-five thousand dollars, they better hire them. In the fire service, I know the average starting salary is somewhere between thirty-four, thirty, thirty-two, five, thirty-three thousand, up to thirty-six thousand, because of the dual qualification. And that's one of the things that everybody has to understand, is we run it, we don't isolate fire and EMS. They are a combined service that you're, for the efficiency of you to be able to do all of the requirements that you have for your jobs, you need to be able to have everybody do all of those things. It's very difficult to operate it if you don't.
Mr. Mayor?
Carol, yes?
Mike, thank you and your fellows for all the work that you've done, because I know you worked very hard on this. After our visit, I contacted several people, residents, to see how they felt about this. And the overall expression that I got was, I would much rather be met, somebody at my front door, with a full-fledged paramedic to take me to the hospital as a first response team from the fire department. That was the overall request that I got. Is there, and I know Springdale has to charge for their services, I've been charged for their services, and gladly paid them. But is it feasible right now to start an ambulance of our own with as many people as I talked to and felt that they would much rather have, go ahead and pay the Springdale part of it, as to have half the service provided by Lowell? Are we going to still be charged by Lowell, and then charged by Springdale for that ambulance call?
For a dual call?
Yes.
That's something that the council would have to establish. That's a business decision that would have to be established by you all, by you all to say, if we don't complete the transport, if we do any ALS intercept, for example, that would be a business decision you all would have to make when you established a billing policy on how we do that.
That was one of the number-one questions that I got. Then I checked with my insurance company, and you were talking about Medicare only paying so much. My insurance max outs at a certain payment, too.
Yes, ma'am, most of them.
And then anything over that is, you either have to pay, the patient has to pay it, or fire department or ambulance has to write it off. So there you go, falling into that loss program again. I know it's a real touchy, touch-and-go situation, but I don't know that right now's the time to change what we're doing to go for something half. part of it as to have half the service provided by Lowell? Are we gonna still be charged by Lowell and then charged by Springdale for that ambulance call?
For a dual call?
Yes.
That's something that the council would have to establish. That's a business decision that would have to be established by you all, by you all to say, if we don't complete the transport, if we do any ALS intercept, for example, that would be a business decision you all would have to make when you established a billing policy on how we do that.
That was one of the number one questions that I got. Then I checked with my insurance company, and you were talking about Medicare only paying so much. My insurance max outs at a certain payment too.
Yes, ma'am, most of them.
And then anything over that is, you either have to pay, the patient has to pay it, or fire department or ambulance has to write it off. So there you go falling into that loss program again. I know it's a real touchy, touch and go situation, but I don't know that right now's the time to change what we're doing to go for something half of what we already have. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I know what you're saying. In fact, several other people made very similar comments to me in the last couple of days. And the only response I can honestly make to that is, and it's hard to make sense out of it to a lot of people because they don't understand totally the service. Again, I'll go back to the numbers that I said earlier. You may have a paramedic show up at your door 100% of the time. 93% of that time, they're gonna, they're going to render basic life support assistance just like an EMT is going to do. You're getting the same level of care at that point. It's the 7% or basically 40, 30 to 40 runs a year, and I know it only takes one, I understand that. But you're talking to 30 or 40% or 30 or 40 runs of that percentage where that paramedic is going to do normally above and beyond what, that same level of care that you would receive as an EMT for stabilization and transportation. I hope that makes a little bit more sense.
Well, like-
Now, the flip side of that is, and I had this discussion with somebody today, if I may, real quick, what about that 7%? How badly are you reducing the service to them? That can be argued two ways because, one, we as a basic life support first response unit on that scene would have two choices, three choices actually. We would have to evaluate the situation, look at it and say, do I stay right here with this patient while I'm waiting my ALS ambulance to get here and render life support or basic aid as best I can until they get here, which is what we currently do anyway in every call. We stabilize the patient, we get the vitals, we find out what's going on, and we hold them as stable as we can until an ambulance arrives anyway. So that's not a big, that's not a big difference. There is a potential difference there, and I know Leroy's standing behind me shaking his head, I don't even have to look. There is a potential difference there in that there could be a delay in the dispatch of that ALS ambulance in some instances while the, while we are getting there and assessing whether this is in fact an ALS call. And that's a reality. It could happen. There would have to be, there would have to be in dispatch protocols, whoever it be, whether Springdale's dispatching this, whether Benton County dispatches this, whoever it might be, in their protocols, there would have to be certain trigger words or trigger symptoms or whatever words you want to use that tell that dispatcher, when they get the call and they hear the word unconscious, that's an automatic ALS. There is no wait for Lowell to get there and say, oh, I need ALS.
Suppose it's a seven-year-old kid calling it in. How does a seven-year-old kid know that somebody's unconscious?
Actually, it's kind of surprising what they can, what, and what they're able to ascertain through those conversations. You're gonna have some of those. I'm not gonna stand up here and tell you you're not. You're gonna have some of those where there's gonna be a couple of minute delay getting that ALS rolling. If that's the case, that's where we as an EMT have to make that judgment and say, okay, I can regain part of that by getting this patient in my ambulance right here, right now, and doing this ALS intercept and getting them partway there where the ambulance meets me en route. And one of the ways we would overcome some of that is the equipment, the basic equipment, for example, the cot. We would mimic or mirror the ALS services in our basic equipment so that when that intercept happens, and I know you're all picturing, oh my gosh, I've gotta be unloaded off this cot and put on this cot and do all of that. No, the only thing that would have to happen is, we would roll up to an agreed-upon meeting point via the radio while we're both coming together. We would say, meet right here. Springdale would already have their ambulance there, or we would already be there, unload their cot and roll our cot directly into their ambulance. So there is no two-minute delay in shuffling people around. It's pull it out, slide it in, lock it down, and go. Is that the, is that the best answer? No, the best answer is put an ALS service in Lowell, but that's not a reality answer today.
Why is that totally not a reality?
I would have to, my opinion would be, how would we pay for it? That's my only question. Could we do it? Number one, we're not set up at this point personnel-wise because it would require additional personnel beyond these four. You'd have to have at least six trained up to the, to appropriate level to be able to staff that ambulance because once you license it ALS, you have to have a paramedic on it. So if one paramedic, if you only hire three, and one of them goes on vacation and the other two are off doing an off-shift job, you've gotta be able to cover with a fourth, with another paramedic. You can't put an EMT in his place because you're an ALS service at that point. So there are some prohibitive factors there that, that, and by the time we equipped it, staffed it, manned it, I'm not gonna tell you you can't. I'm gonna tell you that we would have, we would have to work pretty darn hard in the next two weeks to figure out how you pay for it. I mean, that's just as long as I can be.
Mike, what's the difference in training for, is there a difference in training or is it a difference in equipment between your-
ALS and BLS?
ALS and BLS.
EMT, or MTV and a paramedic? Training level is huge.
Huge. And I'm, one of the, you know, concerns a little bit is, if it's my neighbor, my child, and they need ALS, you know, the ALS service, you know, that's a concern for me, you know, as a parent or, you know, as a friend or a neighbor to somebody that needs assistance, you know, because I don't think you really can tell from when you're there. So Mike, you know, is it the equipment or is it training? And I'm, from what I'm understanding, it's lesser training as well as lesser equipment with the service we're proposing, correct?
Yes, ma'am. There's equipment that you're not legally allowed to use until you reach paramedic level of training. An example of that would be you, you can't start an IV. That's a basic one, but that's, that's one of the differences.
One other question I've gotten, I don't know if you went to this level, as far as for those cases where it is ALS in its worst-case scenario, when you're doing that and there's a transport, my assumption is that the chances of that person surviving do decrease when you do, you know, a handoff essentially.
Yeah, the, the, well, the chances of survival decrease every minute, no matter how you do it. I don't wanna say yes, but I don't wanna say no. Well, I guess the best way that I can answer that, because I wasn't prepared for that question, honestly, I guess the best way that I can answer that is, again, if it's an automatic dispatch for that ALS service, there's not any different than what we do now. Literally, it's no different than what we do now if they're automatically dispatched. The breakdown in your scenario would be if it was toned out as a non-ALS call and we got there and found that it was in fact a code or a heart attack, a stroke, something that was in fact life-threatening. Those do happen. I'm not gonna stand up here and tell you they don't. It's not common that it happens, but yes, ma'am, it can happen.
Typically on something like a car wreck, is that when that-
Most car wrecks, again, here I go. Most car wrecks are, people associate trauma with being, oh my gosh, they're gonna die. That's very, very rarely the case. There are those that are what's called trauma-dead, and you do, do basic or advanced life support efforts on them. That's not the rule in most car wreck trauma. It's broken legs, broken arms, broken ribs, lacerations. It can be, it can look a whole lot worse than sometimes it is, but to tell you that that never happens, no, but it's, it's pretty unusual.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. Mike, what I see in this is the fact that, yes, we might be giving up a little bit of an A ambulance, the paramedics responding at that moment, but is it not true that if we had somebody right here, basically right down the street from 90% of our, our city with the traffic growing and growing the way it is, and infrastructure right now being a little stagnant and with the traffic the way it is, there is probably a better chance that you're gonna be able to get to those people faster than any ambulance from Springdale?
That would be correct. That would be correct.
Mike, I will say I appreciate all the work you've gone in to get us this far, get us to this point that we're looking at it even. I do have a couple of questions. And number one, if we decide to go into the ambulance business, we've looked at the cost of the ambulance, the cost of personnel equipment, all that, are we gonna require additional building structure for housing this?
We believe at this time, if we only have one, that we can house it in the current structure that we have.
Okay. The other thought I would have is how would this affect the timeline on our second fire station that we're looking at going? Are we gonna need another ambulance when we do that? It's gonna be additional costs, we'll need to delay that before we're able to do it, et cetera.
I wasn't prepared to answer that simply because, quite honestly, that's on hold anyway. We don't know based on projected growth or stagnant growth as we are right now in the economy the way it is. I didn't even honestly go that far because I have already, we've already had to push that off at least a year, possibly two years down the road until we have the, the foundation in place that we would need to put in. At that point, that's possible, I mean, it's, it's reality, yeah, we'd have to do something.
Jerry?
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple items I would like to know about. What is the final startup cost of this? Do we have a figure on that? What costs start this deal up right now?
To get us run up and running, it would be approximately $261,000. That's including salaries, which would be paid out obviously over 12 months.
Right. And the second thing being, what are we going to, what are we gonna be looking for a budget per year to budget for this? We're not gonna have an ALS service, we're gonna have a BLS service, okay? What is the budget gonna look like approximately? I know you don't know exactly what that is. Do we have any kind of an idea what it would be on an annual budget year to year?
Including sal, the, no, this is gonna sound crazy because I've gotta go back and add in two salaries that currently exist, okay? So you're, because we've already got those two people in place. So if you take your $156,000 that we're gonna be paying for salaries now, you're gonna have to add these other two people back in at roughly $40,000 apiece. So it's, what, $236,000 for salaries. The ambulance supplies I expect to reduce from about $5,000 to about $3,000 a year because a lot of that would be recollected when we bill. You bill for supplies you use, that's part of the billing process, and so it's somewhat regenerative there. Maintenance obviously is gonna maintain it roughly what we think it's gonna be, and fuel, Lord only knows. It may be $2 a gallon, maybe five. If it maintains where it's currently at, it would be about $5,000 a year. So $230, to roughly $240, give or take, $240,000 before any fees are collected.
Okay, before the fees are collected.
Yes, sir.
Mike, when do we- We have, excuse me.
Oh, it's okay. Go ahead.
Do we have any, any idea what it costs for Rogers or Springdale to operate an ambulance with an ALS service?
I don't-
Each one of the cities, approximately, how much does it cost them to operate an ambulance and man it on an annual basis? Any idea?
I don't have per ambulance, saying these six men, this ambulance, these six men. Springdale's budget to operate their ambulance service, Mayor, you may help me with this, I know you've seen it, I believe, last I knew that budget was over $2 million a year to operate four ambulances.
Those are ALSs.
Those are ALSs.
Yes, understand, those are ALSs.
Their budget, I believe, their, their budget, I believe, is just over $2 million a year to operate four ambulances.
We don't have any figures that would, that would equate a BLS to.
Granted, they run a whole lot more than 500 or 600 runs a year. They run about 5,000 runs a year. So all of your costs obviously are, there's a multiplier in there for the, for the amount of time that those, the use and the service and the maintenance and the fuel and all of the rest of that. But if you did the math, it's basically $500,000 a year for one ambulance to run.
So you, what are you saying, 250,000 a year, basically, budget, run one?
For us?
Yes.
Yeah.
About 250, so we're looking at 260 startup and about $250,000 a year. Budget, operate one ambulance.
Yes, sir.
For a BLS service.
About half the cost of what it costs to run an ALS.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
How quickly would we need to approve an ordinance, I guess, for you to have something up and running by the end of the year? Would, I mean, would have to-
It can't happen.
It can't happen.
I'm just as blunt as I can be about that. There's, there's no way. It's a three to five-week process just to get a license through the state of Arkansas. To get that license, you have to have the ambulance in place, you have to have it sta, I'm sorry, you have to have it equipped and ready to roll out the door. Because the last step in their process of approving your license is they literally come to your door and say, bring it out here, let me see it. And they have a checklist that they have to go through. So it would take us time, obviously, to find the correct ambulance for the right price, hire the personnel, get everything in place, get it equipped and ready to go. I know your next question then is, well, when could you do it? I could see it coming. We would be hard-pressed to do it by March 1st. Not gonna tell you we couldn't, but we would be hard-pressed to do that. If somebody, if we had something approved in early December, I could get rolling on this, have some of it, if I had an idea what was gonna happen, possibly have some of it in place beforehand or prepared to be in place. In fact, a couple of these guys back here are already working on what are we gonna do? Need to set up accounts to purchase our supplies and some of our other stuff. We're trying to get ahead of the game a little bit just in case. It would take us a couple of months at least.
Our service ends with Springdale on the 1st of January?
Yes, it, technically it does, yes.
And I guess they're working with us on it, maybe?
Through conversations verbally, yeah. Is there anything in writing? Not today.
Is that $91,000 negotiable at all?
I haven't heard of anyone that's been successful yet. We haven't approached them, but-
I don't believe so.
People I've talked to haven't had any luck.
My conversations with their fire administration, I've not spoken to their council, obviously, or their mayor, which is where all of this came from. My conversations are with their fire administration and they're pretty convinced that it's pretty well set that this is what it's gonna be. Because they're doing it, I don't know, have you seen the formula that they're using to come up with where, what they want us to have to pay?
They're considering that we run their EMS, we run with them, I mean, we run with their ambulance. They're considering that.
Basically what they look at, and I'm not with Springdale, so I'll do best I can here. Basically what they're looking at is they're providing a service outside of their city, outside of their county even, which is where a lot of their heartburn comes from. They feel like we, as a city and a county, as an entity, should be responsible for whatever percent of the calls they run come to the city of Lowell in their section, we should take that percentage of their budget. And that's where the figure comes from. They take the number of runs, which, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, I believe is about 230 or so, and you divide that out into their two-point-whatever-million dollars, comes to roughly a little over 4% of their budget, and they feel like that's what we should be responsible for. Because it's, everything is, at that point, that ambulance is totally committed to Lowell from the time it rolls out the door until the time it gets that patient to whatever hospital they're going to.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mike, with all of this being said, again, the people that I talk to want to make sure that they get first-class service. If that means you have to be there to do basic life support until Springdale gets there, that's the way they want it. And with paying Springdale its $90,000 a year, that's cheaper than the $261,000 to start up and then $250,000 annually to keep it going. Would it not be better to contemplate putting this off until we can actually provide the paramedics and the equipped ambulance to provide our people with A1 service that we can give them from Lowell? Because this is a lot of responsibility to fall on eight or 10 people's shoulders to say, okay, we're going to take the lives of 7,500 people living in Lowell and tell them how we're going to treat them when they have a 911 call.
Carol, we're not here tonight to decide that. Mike is here to provide additional information.
I understand that, Perry.
So that when the council approves the budget, they'll have a better understanding of what they're approving.
Well, still yet, that is, that's how the people that I talk to see- Well, still yet, that is, uh, that's how the people that I talk to see it. And we're voting, or we will vote, for those people.
That's right.
And how are we going to pay for all of this? Uh, is it going to fall back on individual charges for, per patient? Um, will the taxes raised to cover that? And then again, Springdale has the service, and they have to pay for it themselves. Those citizens in Springdale are paying our portion. And if you turn it around and we had four ambulances, we definitely want them to pay their part. Like we want Bethel Heights to pay their part.
If I may, just real quick, let me rem- remind you of one thing at the very beginning, a- as Perry said, and I'm not putting down anything anybody's said, this, I, I'm happy to answer all questions every time, but remember what I'm trying to bring to you tonight, I'm not going to stand here and say, this is what I want to do. What I'm doing is I'm telling you, I was asked to put another option on the table. This is the best option that I was able to put together, as well as what you already have on the table. And then you guys, obviously, have been elected to make that decision on which way is the best way to go in 2009. That's, that's the best I can say.
Yes, Marty.
Did, did you look at American Medical Response?
As far as private service?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I did not personally look at them. I did talk to the county, uh, D E M coordinator who has visited with them, and they're not even sure they want to do it, number one. Um, they're so tied up right now in private ambulance transportation and, and service that, number one, they're not even sure they want to do the county, let alone a small city. Um, the other reason that I did not pursue that any farther is, and I'll, I'll just be blunt here, I'm not in favor, and I'll come out and say I'm not in favor of, of contracting with a private ambulance service to service our citizens in our city or in our, in our coverage area from an operational standpoint. Has nothing to do with whether they provide good service, I'm sure they do or they wouldn't still be in business. But dispatching issues come into play, uh, protocol issues between the departments come into play, um, who's going to do what, when, and how comes into play. And not that we couldn't work through those, but it brings more, uh, variable factors into it that I don't, I personally, and I'm speaking as, in my person, playing here, that, that outweigh, uh, the other two options.
Does Fayetteville have those problems? I have a-
They do. At times they do. Yes, ma'am.
Mike, thank you very much, you did a good job.
Yes, Guy.
Mike, did I understand you say, uh, we're going to build Medicare?
We would, uh, medic- if we did a transport of a Medicare patient, then yes, we would have to go in.
Okay, because, uh, I was, I was transporting, I tell you, your, your crew, when they respond, they're outstanding. Now, I received a bill for 58 bucks. Now, I sent that bill to my secondary carrier, which was my carrier, and they reimbursed me. So we, you have not only Medicare, but you've got the secondary carrier that also can be built.
Yes, sir.
Another question, who is going to do the billing? Is it the fire station or at Mary, at the, uh, C O, Mary Mason?
Actually, I can address that one real quick. Um, the person who's going to have to do it asked me this yesterday and I tore my head off. We would, under the current proposal, we would initiate the billing at the fires, at, at our station. Uh, the collection would be done through the finance department at City Hall. Because we have no, we've eliminated any cash flow through the fire department, it all needs to be in one place, or the city auditor, or the state auditor, anyway. And, and we can streamline that by combining our information service, our systems, into one where they both have access to it. We would initiate it and then it would be turned over to them at that point.
Mike, I have one more question. Just reading the letters here, and this, this is real quick. It says that, uh, the estimated cost of providing, providing service to the city of Lowell is $91,370. That's just an estimate, it could be more, it could be less. Do they subtract out any, like, as far as a billing? Will they subtract out what they receive, or do they actually collect that?
They actually collect that separately.
On, on top of that, so, okay.
Yes, sir. And, uh, while I'm here and, and, and thinking about it, uh, you'll know that in the budget, if we, if you do go to Springdale with contract, there's 11, 111,000, not 91,000 in the budget.
24 Rogers.
Rogers has not come out and said in writing, they're going to bill us, but they have told me verbally, it will probably eventually happen, whatever Springdale does, Rogers is going to want their part too. And they service everything west of 540 in our city.
One more quick question, Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
On the billing, since you'll be handling at the fire station, just for purposes of budget, will you need additional staff for that billing? If you go that route, you can do that with your existing staff.
Yes, sir.
Mike, thank you very much. Very good presentation.
Mayor, I'd like to request a five-minute break.
Okay. Everybody agree? Five-minute break.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
You know what, I, I used your phone.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's not a problem, but, um, well, the problem with making claims, but, Reese, it's not a matter of saying things. It's not a matter of just sending an invoice. We have a professional company.
Do I have a message to call you? Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're just trying to, part of our 2008, planning for 2009, just trying to meet with everybody. So I don't know if you work during the day, I can do after hours, just 30 minutes or so.
Yeah, I work a bit, dance there.
Uh-huh, okay.
You only work 7:30, 4:30.
Okay, yeah, well, if you want to give me a call, and I'll look at my calendar, but just real quickly, just sit down and, you know, go over what we did in '08, what we're looking at for '09, just trying to get feedback.
So you can do that?
Sure, appreciate it.
I'll holler at you during the daytime.
Sure, that's fine, yeah, and I can give you my cell number too, I guess I'm a little behind. I'll write it down, so, give an edit.
You don't know if they're going to go or not. I don't.
Do you realize I've been, I've been problem solving the last eight years? Solving problems on buildings and airplanes and, when a problem comes up, uh, like, well, there, a little bit of everything. It's the same thing, it's the same stuff. It's a, it's a mentality. You have to have a problem-solving mentality. What their biggest problem is? Who, who are the politicians? You don't have problem solvers. When did we approve the city hall?
Yeah.
Uh, we approved the city hall back about two years ago.
The old.
The old city hall, but it was approved, we put on, uh, referendum and then we voted down. The new city of Hockham.
Five-minute break is over. Everybody, please be seated.
I could check into it and find out. No, but, no, and then also I've been to Rock too, I've gone to, uh, I've gone to, just so you know, I, I, I've done a bit of, a little bit.
He called the break over.
Next item on the agenda is a meeting rules of the city council. Marty Latham.
I just asked that these be put in a packet so that we could begin to review them. I think we have to make the decision on how we want to run our meetings, what, the first meeting of January? Is that correct? Mainly just for information, so you can review what we do now and make any changes.
Next item on the agenda is a parking ordinance. Tom Kicklack has provided a rough draft for each of you. Marty Latham has asked that this ordinance be sent to the ordinance committee for ordinance, uh, their review prior to coming to the council for vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we also ha- have a public hearing scheduled for this after maybe the ordinance committee reviews it?
Yes, we'll have to have public hearings, yes.
Do you think we'd have one separate, maybe, from this council meeting? Just because I know it'll kind of, we'll be sitting up here all night, you know, wasting a lot of people, you know, there's a lot of people here that are for business, other business, and I don't want to waste their time.
We can have a public hearing separately, yes.
Yeah, that's what I would like to do.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have one comment. Just based on what we've heard a little bit tonight, something that I wonder should be considered perhaps is maybe, since you do have some individuals within the city limits that live in a more rural area, if there shouldn't perhaps be some additional breakdown on where that parking is prohibited and not prohibited, just as, just for consideration. Since you do have people, like the gentleman that spoke, that mentioned he lives in a more rural area versus a standard subdivision, and I think there needs to possibly be some-